Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Wednesday, April 10th, 2024, 6:30 PM. Could we all please rise and pay respect to the flag?
At my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Noting at the roll, please.
Noted, there is a quorum. Member, trustee Payne is excused.
Item four, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Knowles. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none. Item five, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second? Okay, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by trustee Knowles. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Knowles.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Item six, public comment on items not on the agenda. If I see you raise your hand, I'll call on you, give you three minutes to come up to the podium. Just identify yourself and you have three minutes to speak. Yes, sir.
Want ladies first, I don't care.
Doesn't matter.
Well, we don't want you to get tired out.
Okay.
Thanks, Don.
Good evening, my name's Mike McCabe, I live on Gulf Hill in Waterston, township resident for 22 years now, retired undersheriff from the sheriff's office. And I just wanted to comment real quickly, because I know there were several articles in the old Sherman publication newspapers about the dispatch rates, and I'm not speaking for the department, I'm speaking as a taxpayer, because I'm not happy either, but I want to give you a little background, if it's okay. I was the one that worked with the fire chiefs and the police chiefs many years ago when we developed the formula for the rates, okay? And we came up with the idea that we'll look, we'll take three years worth of calls for service, and then we'll establish the rate for the next three years. And then when the contract expires, we'll go back and we'll take again the average for the next three years, the last three years compared to the previous three years, and that's how the rate has developed, and it's developed on a per-call basis. Now, I've talked to the chief, does a great job here, great hire, West Bloomfield Township, I remember now. Anyway, and I understand why everybody is upset, but I wanted to make it clear that there were several things that went into that, and again, because I have so much knowledge out, I've been in there for 44 years, and the undersheriff for the last 20-plus, that the formula that was developed worked well for many years, and it still does work well. But, most of the communities we service are population gainers, like Lyon Township, it's the fastest growing community in the state of Michigan, Oxford Township's grown tremendously, obviously, from when we first came out here. Rochester Hills, the old Avon Township, when I was a deputy, was 24,000 people, today they're pushing 80,000 people. I just tell you that Oxford's calls for service obviously increased, and the chief knows that, he and I talked about it, so there's going to be an increase as a result of that. The deputies settled their contract, and they got a pretty good contract, in terms of a very, a couple of big wage increases, plus they were retroactive. We also had a problem with, because I did all the hiring and firing for many years, as all departments have, recruitment, and especially in dispatch. Dispatch is one of the toughest jobs in police work, bar none, okay? And I don't have to tell you that, it is an extremely stressful job, and a lot of people that we bring in ultimately wash up, they don't make it. So we developed a system where we had a recruitment bonus, and you got to the point, it's several thousands of dollars, so that also went into the cost of the dispatch contracts, because that wasn't in the last time we had contracts. Labor contract recruitment bonus, so, and then the last thing, which you've talked about in the newspaper article, I was a little disappointed that the, and I'm not knocking Jim Newell, he does a great job, but, you know, nobody talked to Mike Spiz, anybody from the Board of Commissioners, unfortunately for that article, and, you know, this was pushed by a certain person on the board, okay? And I'll tell you, it's Dave Woodward, he's the chairman of the Board of Commissioners, he's Democrat, he represents Royal Oak, I don't care about party affiliation, but, when these contract rates were passed by the Board of Commissioners, all the Democrats voted yes and all Republicans voted no, okay? Unfortunately, Mr. Spiz wasn't at that meeting, he was out of town, but I know he would have voted no. So, it was shoved down your throats, yeah, but I want to make it clear, because in the article, it's kind of a little bit hard to tell, it's almost like it's the sheriff's office fault, it's not the sheriff's office fault, okay? It was a policy decision made by the Board of Commissioners and the county executive, quite frankly, also. We were very disappointed to see it, we had an agreement with, under the Brooks Patterson administration, going back to 1994, locals that don't have county-funded courts. Now, here, you're serviced by the 523 District Court in Rochester Hills, so it's a county-funded court, but cities like Royal Oak, Farmington Hills, Pontiac, they have locally funded courts. And the history on that going way back into early 70s, is the county offered every community in the state, in the county, you want to come into the county system, you can come in, we'll absorb all the costs. Well, back then, all the courts were revenue generators, they made a lot of money for the local communities, so they said, nah, we don't want anything to do with that. Troy and Claussen, really only two, that's the 524, that did come in. As a result of that, there's a state statute that says, if a judge sentenced somebody to the county jail on a local ordinance violation, not a state violation, so, let's say I got arrested for drunk driving in Royal Oak, and I got sent to jail for seven days, okay? There's a fee that is charged, can be charged under state statute, it's called the jail boarding fee. Well, the agreement was that the county would not charge indirect costs to patrol contracts for police services and for dispatch, and they eliminated the jail boarding fees for all those south end communities, and of course, Royal Oak was one of the biggest beneficiaries of it. So, when this started coming up, everybody said, oh, okay, if you're going to do this to the little communities, then you need to reinstate the jail boarding fees. The latest jail boarding fees, either around $142 a day to run that system, to run that jail system. Woodward says, oh yeah, we're going to do that, we're going to do that, well, obviously you haven't heard a thing about that, and you're not going to hear a thing about it, because they're not going to do that. But it was an agreement between the county administration, sheriff's office, and the locals, we'll do all of the jail boarding fees, you don't put these indirect costs in. And I know it's a report by Maximus, we disagree with how they developed that, and the indirect costs that they're charging, but, I wanted to make it clear, that's what went into all these, the huge increase that you saw, the first year, and many other communities did too. And I know there's been talk, I know the chief talked about it in the paper, if you want to go out and look for other services, go right ahead, I'm going to tell you, you're not going to find a better service, you're not going to find more professionally trained people. We were the first department in the state of Michigan to do emergency medical dispatch in our dispatch center. It's extremely difficult to fill those positions, as it is for police officers, you see what's going on in Lake Orion right now, they can't hire anybody down there for their police department. But, the point being is, you want to look at your options, and I'll just end it on this, there was one, one department that used to have their own dispatch center, and they came to us, they ended up disbanding their fire dispatch center, they were saving them $750,000 a year, because it was costing almost a million dollars a year to run their dispatch center. So, again, you want to look at options, look at options, I have no problem with that, I don't think the sheriff has no problem with that. Quite frankly, you're not going to find a better deal or a more professional dispatch center.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, any other members of the public wish to speak? Don?
All right. My name's Dawn Medesey, I've been in the Oxford community for 25 years now, and I currently work for the Oxford Township Parks and Recreation. Back in the late fall, two of our volunteers came in and spoke to the group, the ARPA group, about funding, and had asked if they, the Parks and Rec, for our Super Bowl Pickleball Courts could get funding to help make improvements. That funds were awarded, and I wanted to come and say thank you for that. I know I sent a handwritten note, but I wanted to come in person and express my appreciation for approving those funds. Right now, we are on track for late fall, for those improvements, the company that's going to be doing the work has not provided a date, they're just saying we're on the books for fall. So, once we get updated information, I'll pass that information along so that you know that that's work in progress. And then, in addition, I wanted to personally, in front of everybody, say, CJ, CJ has been a big advocate for seniors in our community, and helped with providing input for the ARPA funds, as well as writing grants for this purpose. So, again, thank you to all of you that approved those funds, and to CJ for help making our community a better place for the active aging in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Randy?
Thank you. Randy Labaster, Royal, pardon me, Royal Burtown Drive, lower part of Oxford Township, just toward the southern end. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here because I'm running for state house, state representative to serve Oxford, as well as the surrounding communities. I'm going to keep my remarks brief, we don't need to take a whole three minutes here, you've got a very long agenda. I would describe myself as a traditional conservative, I believe that, my votes would be very consistent with the overriding values of the community, but I'm not running to be a keyboard warrior to advance any particular ideological objective. I'm running to be a public servant, helping individuals who may have concerns with state government, working with local governments such as yourself, to achieve community goals. That is my objective, that's what I'm looking to accomplish. If the voters of this district honor me with the honor of making me their next state representative, I look forward to working closely with you to achieve those objectives, to serve better the residents of Oxford Township. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy. Anyone else from the public wish to come up and speak? Keep looking. Seeing none. Item seven, Board of Trustees comments. We'll start this week with trustee Charles.
Well, first of all, I was on vacation last month, so I thank everyone for keeping things in order while I was gone, buildings still standing, et cetera. Secondly, a couple things about Oxford Addison Youth Assistance, which I'm a board member, we had a bottle drive this past month, which was, we raised a little over $2,000 for that, we split that with Polly and Trail. And another thing we have going to Oxford Addison Youth is, we have a sick pizza, the day after tax filing day, so you can celebrate, if you buy a pizza, it's a sick pizza, 15% goes to Oxford Addison Youth Assistance, so, for anybody that does their tax return, you can get a sick pizza, 15% goes to a good cause. Take that away.
Thank you. Clerk Wright?
Just one comment that tomorrow, on the 11th, the clerk's department will be attending an election security training session, it's from 8:30 to 1:30, so our department will be vacant during that time, so if you need something from the clerk's department, leave us a voicemail, email, something like that, we can get back to you and address your concerns. Thank you.
I'll go next, this is the first. On top of that, Danielle will be here to support any walk-ins that don't hear that. Don, Seymour Celebration, June 6th through 9th, corporate sponsors are always welcome, see the Parks and Rec people. The Tough Mudder is on schedule to come, June 15th and 16th, out at Canig Materials. And today, we made the final, assigned the last payment for the railroad safety path up by the school. That being said, Superior Excavating, specifically Frank Biardi, donated $10,000 worth of his company's time and labors and effort towards this safety path project. So, kudos to Superior Excavating and Frank Biardi. Thank them. Other than that, that's all I have, Treasurer Ferrari?
I'm not at this side.
Trustee Knowles?
Thank you, but no thank you.
And trustee Colvin?
Just a reminder, April 21st, the DDA is going to do cleanup of the downtown, so come downtown, help us clean up, we'll be to work.
Thank you. Item eight, second reading of the sign ordinance, 85.a.001. It's in, board members, it's in your packet, it's lengthy, if you have any questions, Mateo Pasalacqua from Carlisle Wartman is here tonight to, we can address any questions, or through trustee Knowles, who worked hard on this sign ordinance. Are there any questions?
I move to rescind and replace Article 9, signage of the Charter of Township Oxford zoning ordinance, adopt ordinance 85.a.001, ordinance to be added to the Oxford Charter Township Code of Ordinances, as new chapter 41 signs with one correction, page 35 under section 19, we're going to put Chevy published in summary in a newspaper instead of in full.
A second for discussion? Motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Knowles. I'll entertain questions, please. Mateo, would you?
Yeah, Mateo Pasalacqua, Carlisle Wartman Associates, Township Planning Consultants. So I know that Megan Mason-Mannock did, along with John's guidance, and helped a lot of the heavy lifting for this with the ORC. Her apologies, she couldn't be here tonight, so she kind of sent me up here to, you know, answer any questions that we could. I know that one of the, one of the items that was recently addressed with the sign ordinance was related to the additional allowance for wall signage for medical emergency facilities that kind of came somewhat out of the recent ZVA work for McLaren. We just wanted to make sure that, you know, when we're talking about signings that isn't necessarily related to advertising or business identification, but more or less emergency or public services, that there's a little bit more wiggle room there in allowance for those signs, so that they don't have to go through a multi-step process to get approval, or potentially, and I don't see the ZVA going this road, denial. And it's my understanding that Commissioner Payne was appreciative of those considerations in this ordinance.
Yes, thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Knowles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you, Mateo.
I'd just like to go on record that you guys are officially my easiest meeting ever, so thank you.
We have something else.
Yeah, yeah, spoke too soon.
Item nine, fire department. Want to rest it up, chief?
No.
Okay, well, we'll go through A, purchase of two ambulances.
Board, I sent you a decent breakdown, I think, of the options for ambulances, as you know, our ambulance fleet is living on life support and high mileage. We've got the one that we ordered from two years ago that's supposed to be, knock on wood, delivered sometime this summer, and when we ordered that one two years ago, it was $300,000. And now, we're getting prices anywhere from $450,000 on up, as you can see. And, but we got lucky, because one of the companies that we got a bid from had placed an order on behalf of another community to our south, our neighbors.
Oxford?
Yeah, north, north, yeah, there you go, lower Oxford. Their new fire chief wants to buy ambulances like he had in his previous department, so we were able to actually jump the line, be able to at least hold those ambulances till I get approval from you folks to place the order, and we get it at the price that would, which they had gotten for a year and a half ago when they placed their order. So, which, as you can see from the other prices, is a substantial savings, but it's still over $150,000 more than we are paying, paid for the last one, so, but if we wait any longer, I don't know what we're going to do, it's just going to keep on going up.
I would authorize Oxford Chief Matthew Majestic to order and purchase two Type 1 Road Rescue Ultramatic Ambulances, custom module design with a Ford F-550 XLT 4x4 chassis, including the striker, stretcher, and load system for emergency vehicles plus, at a total purchase price of $894,230. This $894,230 amount to be expensed to fire fund account 207-357-970.000, vehicle purchase. Further, Oxford Fire Chief Matthew Majestic is authorized to sign any necessary documents regarding the purchase of the ambulances.
Can I second? I'll second. Okay, Treasurer, I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Charles. I'm going to entertain some questions, but I have one first. Is there a discount if you prepay?
No.
No discount for cash payment upfront, none whatsoever?
None of the bids that we received, no.
Okay.
A couple offered a $500 discount if we bought from them, but, you know, that was it, but they were still $30,000 and $40,000 more than the others. So, no, we did not get any kind of benefit that way, but we are going to have them in, well, December of next year, and January of '26, compared to three and a half to four years from the other companies.
Okay, any other questions? Clerk Wright?
And on the one you ordered in 2022, you said the price went up to $311,000 or whatever, is that, is that something that was bill changes on their end, and were we locked in at the 297?
We, we had locked in at 297, but then the county changed the radio systems, and we had to change that process, and then our stretcher load system changed due to a change on our end, so we were responsible for that, that's what gave us the increase of a little over $11,000 from the one, you know, part, it was because, well, they're both because of us.
So, these are good prices that were?
Oh, these, these are good, that's the other thing, on the EV Plus contract, they're the only ones that are going to stand by the price, period, unless we change anything. The other two bids said, well, we'll give you a price for the stretcher and load system at that time, when it comes to six months or less for build time. So, the amount that that could go up would be anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000 more each, so.
Any other questions for chief? Okay, roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Knowles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Item B, proposed ballot language for the fire millage. I know we have attorney Ellis here to help us through this, if you have any questions, so.
I'll, I'll start a little bit, but I'll defer the ball to it to attorney Ellis. As, as you know, that we have worked, myself, the auditor, attorney Ellis, clerk Wright, treasurer Ferrari, and Lindsay, our finance manager, to kind of, we took our capital improvement plan, our needs, our projections and costs, and we worked at what we thought we would need, and I've asked to kind of, what's the, what's the minimum we can increase to meet the needs and still not get crazy and try and over, we know it's, you know, inflation has taken a huge hit on us, as you can see from these prices that we've been getting, and we're trying to do this the least amount possible without going crazy. And at this point, I guess I'll defer any other questions to attorney Ellis, and she can talk to the language.
Sure. Good evening. So this board is aware, this will be a new additional millage, which is intended to replace and supersede the prior expired millage in its entirety. As the chief stated, the numbers were run through subcommittee, and they are meant to meet the expenses of the fire department. I can answer any questions with regard to the millage language, which was drafted to be in compliance with requirements under state law.
Do we have any questions, board members?
I move to approve the resolution to approve the Charter of Township of Oxford Fire Protection Emergency Medical Services and Advanced Life Support Services Millage, authorizing a tax levy of up to 5.25 mills for a period of six years, beginning with the December 2024 levy, and authorize the township clerk to certify the resolution and submit the appropriate ballot language conclusion for the November 5th, 2024 general election ballot.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by clerk Wright. Questions, please. Seeing and hearing none, roll call?
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Knowles?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Thanks, board.
Thank you, chief. Item 10, Sharp Engineering Report, in your package was a very concise engineering report from engineer Sharp. If we have any questions or concerns on that report, we can bring them up now, but if I see none, or hear none, we'll move on to item 11. Seeing none, item 11, unfinished business. Item 11A, Oakland County Sheriff's Office Substation Buildout Authorization for Bids. Board members, many months ago, we approved the architectural funds to have the new substation enhancements drawn up. We've done several iterations on it, all within budget, and made many changes, including additional space for the clerk's office, driving up to the back loading doors, changed doors on the building, and tonight, I, we come before you to ask permission, to seek the approval, to send the RFP out for bid on the Mitten website, and once those bids are received back, we would then report out from qualified bidders what their amount was, and seek a recommendation to move forward if all is approved.
I move to approve the Charter of Township of Oxford Request for Proposal, RFP, renovations and expansion of the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, Oxford Township Substation, and to post the RFP on the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network Mitten website.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, I have a second by trustee Knowles. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Roll call?
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Knowles?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Trustee Charles? Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I do have, Lieutenant Patterson is with us tonight, if we need to talk about anything in the building, and/or item 11B, proposed ballot language for police millage. Board members, the, the police operating millage voted in in 2020, was for 3.9152 mills, heavily has brought it down to about 3.88. With the additional officers, as we've grown our department, as, based on the needs of the community, and the cost of their contracts, and the cost of doing business, we are asking to go out to the public for a 4.25 mills, for an operating millage for the Shus Substation to operate in Oxford Township.
I move to approve the resolution to approve the Charter of Township of Oxford Police Operating Millage authorizing a tax levy of up to 4.25 mills, to be levered annually for a period of four years, beginning with the December 2025 levy, and authorize the township clerk to certify the resolution and submit the appropriate ballot language conclusion on August 6th, 2024, primary election ballot.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by trustee Knowles. We ought to have Lieutenant Patterson, he has a couple questions, kind of easy, we're going to drill him now.
Oh, let's do it, come on.
Okay, do you have a question, trustee Charles?
No, he can tell us a few things to fill in the blanks, I'm sure there's a few, he looks like he's primed anyhow, right? What can I help you with?
How is our substation performing?
Excellent.
Closure rate?
Closure rate's the highest out of the Oakland County substations that we have, and, you know, like I said, these are reasonable growth rates that we've been working at over, especially you, Mr. Curtis, Supervisor Curtis, over all these years, and we're just trying to meet the, you know, the suggested needs with the growth of the community, you know, it's usually the growth of the community and the crime rate, and the crime rate is, our closure rates very well, and it's, we're a growing community, everybody seems to be coming north, and you can see all the houses coming up, and I always try to make the analogy, it's like we go out for coffee at, you know, at the local diner, and we're all the only ones in there, where every, you know, waitress or the waiter is coming over and servicing your needs, and then it gets packed, we're going to wait for that coffee. So we don't want that to happen, we want to stay proactive, and not just do, you know, get back to the situation where it's more reactive and proactive.
Okay. Clerk Wright?
We hired, we hired three dyspomorphosis, are they here yet? I mean, are they on?
The sergeant is, and we're, we're working on filling those positions, as retired undersheriff McCabe said, you know, it's kind of hard to fill some positions lately, with all law enforcement across the whole country, I would believe, not the world, and we're, they're spearheading that, and we're working with everybody downtown, and with Supervisor Curtis to make sure everybody's, you know, it's, it's kind of complicated to a certain degree, because you need the people, you need the patrol cars, you need equipment, because what we did, we're going to be having everyone have a vehicle, and right now, with Central Garage, and the contract with Central Garage, there's a little Garage and the contract with Central Garage, there's a little, little lack of supply right now, so we're working on that to make sure it's ready to go, and so you're not being billed for something that you're not getting at that time. So we're, we're working diligently on our end and my end to get that done.
In order, writing this language, I know Attorney Ellis, myself, Lieutenant Patterson, Danielle, you went down. We met with corporate counsel for the county, we met with Gay Pierre, who is the financial manager for the sheriff's office. So we did do diligence in coming up with the number to try to provide our citizens with the best of the services we could for the money. So with that, roll call.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Coleman.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item eleven C, proposed ballot language for Safety Path Millage.
Our board members, the Safety Path Committee's been discussing this for a little while. They decided to ask the voters in November, ask up to half a mill to help expand our safety path system. As I know, it can be to the south, that's quite a well-developed system. We'd actually like to connect different areas to that area, to that community. A lot of people have Oxford Township as completely walkable. One thing we do want to change, though, if you go to the resolution, the whereas, the be further resolved that Oxford Township, please delete, not including the Village of Oxford, because this ballot language does include the Village of Oxford. That's on page, we're here. It's in, it's.
Third to read.
I can't see the page on it.
Two forty-seven.
Forty-seven. Just change that. I move to approve the resolution to approve the charter of Oxford Safety Path Millage, authorizing a tax levy of up to point five mills for a period of ten years, beginning with the December twenty-twenty-four levy, and authorize the township clerk to certify the resolution as amended, and submit the appropriate ballot language for inclusion on the November fifth, twenty-twenty-four, general election ballot. Not prior to the general.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Coleman.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
No.
And Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Okay, item eleven D, Oak Ridge and Oak Ridge Court Special Assessment District Resolution. Number one, Clerk Wright.
Yes. Board members, at our last meeting, we approved the petitions to proceed with the Oak Ridge and Oak Ridge Court Special Assessment District. And before you tonight is resolution number one to potentially set a public hearing for the, going over the estimated cost, the boundaries, and the, and the actual area itself that is proposed to be in the SAD. Since our last meeting, we've had several issues come up, up with that way, as far as length, length or width of the road, whether it needs to be a twenty-foot road, twenty-four foot road. So at this point, I guess it's a matter of getting feedback, maybe from Attorney Ellis, maybe from some representatives from the Oak Ridge homeowners, to see where this needs to go forward, because we, and I'm just speaking for myself, I don't want to get too far down the road where it ends up making a problem for this township board or for the, for the residents. So I guess I'll send it back to you Supervisor Curtis for further discussion.
I call it the great debate. We've been working on this Oak Ridge Road SAD for quite a few months. And over the course of that, we've had three different concerns come up and changed around. We met last week, Attorney Ellis, Engineer Sharp, Tim the Building Official, Tim London, myself, and Jim, if you want to come up, we'll address that with you. But Brittany sent you a letter with the current findings of the road, and we need to address those and see what we want to do.
Good evening. Jim Borat from two oh five Oak Ridge Court. Following the last meeting, I did have occasion to call Mr. Sharp. And he, he, we're discussing whether or not we want to go with a twenty-foot or twenty-four-foot road. In the interim, we went ahead and got bids for twenty-four foot, and circulated that amongst the neighbors. Haven't heard any objections to that and the additional cost of that. I did get, Jim did tell me that he was nonetheless going to submit the question to the township's attorney. What could go wrong with that? I did get an email yesterday from your counsel, and I was able to talk with her this morning, and she alerted me to the question about whether or not this was going to require a fire hydrant, given the length of the road. And that was the first we heard about this morning. And she dragged a man, I also called the fire department, and he invited me that there really is no water main that we can tie into. There's nothing on Seymour Lake Road that would allow us to even, even if we were able to figure out how to get it in, there's no access, there's no, there's no main there. So we're looking at, are there other alternatives? That's, again, raised today. He told me there, he thought that there might be a couple of alternatives. We don't know what the cost of those are. We have some issues because our area, the road in itself, the roadbed, is just slightly elevated above our water table. So we have, I don't know whether it's feasible to put in a well of some kind in that area to feed a tank from which water could be suctioned. I did point out that, once you get past a thousand feet, all the properties have waterfrontage. But he told me, well, in the winter, we can't be out there chopping holes in the ice and try to salvage somebody's house to pump water. I understand the dilemma. I'm, we're in a situation where it is a practical difficulty. We don't have, we don't know whether it's feasible to put in a water, a fire hydrant there. What I would request, and I suggest, as I, as I, way we go forward, is that we nonetheless go ahead with your proposal. If it turns out that we either can or cannot put in the hydrant, you'll always have the opportunity. We would have to, we don't have homeowners association, so we're all individuals on there. So it might be that if, if it ultimately turns out that you've got to put in a hydrant, and there's a feasible way of accomplishing it, that, that we would bear that cost in the same special assessment district. Otherwise, we would be left with having to come to the ZBA and ask for variance. I've been doing variances requests for a while, so I'm somewhat familiar with it. I candidly think that we're likely candidates for approval of a variance out of the circumstances. We, we did bring this on ourselves. The township actually approved this road as it is. There's an interpretation here about the, what the nature of an alteration. We noticed that we're not making any dimensional changes to this road. It's been approved by the township as is for many years. Over those years, we've treated the road with chloride, we've surfaced it with new material, we've graded it, we've taken care of it, we've snowplowed it, we've put salt and pepper, Sultan sand on it over the years. So it's, it's been something that now we're going to surface it, and now we have an interpretation that says, well, you put new surface on it, and that's an alteration that triggers all this new compliance that none of us had anticipated. But I would urge you to, rather than further delaying this, that we go ahead with the meeting for public hearing, and in the interim, we'll work on trying to see whether or not this, any feasible way of putting this in, or seeking a variance.
I have a question. If we move ahead with public hearing, that doesn't mean we're approving the SAD. It's just the public hearing itself to hear any objections about the road?
So that's accurate. You can move forward with your public hearing tonight, and you can determine to deny moving forward with the SAD, to approve it, or to approve it with conditions. So, or you can take no action at all. You have some options. So that's where you're at. And I'm, I'm available to answer any questions as well with regard to the opinion. I know that it was a late add.
Board members, questions? Clerk Wright.
Yeah, a couple of things here is, number one is, we only require a fifteen hundred dollar deposit, and we're eating that up pretty quick. So my recommendation to this board is to request a trust and agency account to continue the research on this project, because this is probably the most difficult SAD we faced as a board to, to move forward. My other point is, that being said, is that if you get down to the last public hearing, and the homeowner say, we're not, we're not interested in continuing, then we don't have those monies up front to cover the consultant payments as well. My other concern is, a lot of these issues that are going back and forth, even if we do have a public hearing, it doesn't resolve any type of an agreement that the road's going to be twenty-four foot wide, if you need a boulevard approach, if you need the permits from Oakland County, the paving on that. Also, the, the hibernation issue that just came up tonight. So for me, oh, let's get these issues worked out by the time we have a second public hearing to see if it's worth even going forward on this project.
This is a question for you. Has this board seen the new cost estimate with the twenty-four?
No.
Because you're being asked to approve a cost estimate tonight. So this board has not seen the cost estimate.
Actually, I was advised that they didn't need that yet, so we didn't submit it, but we have it. I also understand that the contractor, the bidder that we have, has been in contact with the road commission. They have exchanged the information they need for the connection. They have advised the contractor that they don't need any stamped or engineered drawings they're content, but they, they're apparently familiar with this contract. Their fan are satisfied that, once they've told them what they have to do, that that's sufficient. And he's got that information, and, and has incorporated that into our, our latest bid. And I can, I can give you that bid.
All permitting done through the RCLC for the approach will be gotten?
Yes.
The road will be twenty-four foot wide.
And throughout, throughout the entire road, the latest bid is for a twenty-four foot wide road, the entire length.
The entire length. Okay, so that SAD faction has to come up with a plan for a hydrant, dry hydrant, tank, well, something to satisfy the chief on this road. And our public hearing is to do what?
To approve, well, you're being asked to hold a public hearing on the plans as presented and the cost estimate as presented.
We haven't been presented them, so would it be wise to table or postpone this agenda item?
I would recommend that tonight, and that will give us time in the interim to perhaps discuss some solutions that may make sense for the township and for this community.
Okay. And that will then address the TNA account shortage that Clerk Wright's brought up?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
So that means that the first, the first resolution, this, this agenda item will now be moved to the May eighth meeting. That's.
If you table it.
If you choose to move forward.
Which one is postponed?
You postpone to a certain date.
Okay. Would you want to do that?
Yes.
We should get an idea of Mr. Port, how much we need for our trust and agency. Two thousand, five thousand, ten thousand, I have no idea.
Yes, sir.
So then, what Treasurer Ferrari said, what, would it cost? Is there a ballpark cost that we would need, that we look at?
The, the estimate we have currently is two hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
No, no, no. TNA account for our.
With the hydrant and stuff like that?
Excuse me.
We have no idea.
Contractors, we have to have the TNA count brought up to date for our contractors.
I understand.
That's the number we need.
What is that number?
That number comes to us.
I don't know. I don't have that number.
We have that number that we are going to give you, and if it's okay with you, we can postpone this until the May meeting.
Okay. I do have two copies of the bid here, if I can present it to you. Have the records. Do you now have it?
I can take them.
Thank you.
But no one has had them in their possession before this meeting to open a public hearing or anything on it, though, Jim.
As, as I say, I, it was indicated to me that we did, you didn't need to have that for this particular meeting, right? And we didn't, we didn't know yet what was going to come of the issue of, obviously, this newest.
Okay.
So what I was trying to ask is, what would it cost potentially to put in a hydrant?
Oh, there's no guesses, based on the soil conditions, based on the type of hydrant, based on the type of tank, based on a bladder. I wouldn't even guess, Jim.
Just top of my head, we just did one out at Station Three.
Yeah.
The well was, was pretty deep out there. I think they had to drill it a hundred and thirty feet or something like that. But that was about in the ballpark of fifty thousand dollars by the time it was all said and done, with all the electrical components and things that were needed, so.
I assume that that's, the selector on that is being eaten by the township. For our situation, we don't, again, we don't, if, if you're going to have a perpetual hydrant there, or tank, or whatever, that requires electrical input, we don't have, we don't have somebody that's going to be able to pay that bill.
Those details will be worked out before the next meeting. They can't be worked out here in this meeting.
Okay. Is there any way we can have, expedite that? We, we were hopeful, frankly, of getting this underway, this, yeah, this summer, and getting contractors lined up and willing to commit to a timeframe like that is not easy.
We can schedule meetings tomorrow, Friday, Monday, Tuesday. We can schedule them as fast as we can, and we have to get ahold of you, have this information, have some avenue of what fire chief is going to ask for, for making that hydrant available to his firefighting.
Could you go ahead tonight with a plan to go ahead with it, adding a condition that we get a variance?
I ask you for your opinion.
You can cert, this board can certainly move forward with a conditional approval tonight, and it's always the applicants, if it's their prerogative, they always have a right to go to the zoning board of appeals for an administrative denial for an existing nonconformity. So yes, this board can do that tonight. However, I state again, my concerns are that, one, you're being asked to approve plans that don't conform with your ordinance. Your ordinance states that any alteration of a private road should come into conformance with your engineering standards. Your fire chief has raised public safety issues with regards to the length of the road, with the lack of a hydrant to connect to. So I think there's legitimately some issues to work out, and I'm not sure that the board has before them the most up-to-date cost of the project, which the board is also being asked to approve tonight.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari. In our professional opinion, what's our best remedy?
In my opinion, I would recommend tabling it so that we can work out some of these issues, so that the board is confident that it has a plan before it, that it has any variances that the applicants are required to get, and that any health and safety issues have been adequately addressed to the satisfaction of the township. I think, you know, we could probably move as expeditiously as the next meeting.
Get all the stuff buttoned up and ready for our first public hearing to be scheduled in June.
Yes, but I, I would have, if, if the board approves the plans tonight as presented, I don't know, again, I don't think that you have the most up-to-date cost estimate in front of you, which you're also being asked to approve, which is why I caution you even with a conditional approval.
What's this board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to postpone the Oak Ridge Road, Oak Ridge Court Special Assessment District Resolution, number one, to the May eighth, twenty-twenty-four meeting.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Questions?
No.
We will work hard to get these meetings organized to understand this total dilemma that was brought to my attention just this week, so. Roll call.
Trustee Coleman.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles.
Yep.
And Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
There's always the opportunity to build a Mr. Port to a special meeting, too, correct?
Yes, there is.
If you want to pay the sub hundred dollar, whatever that fee is.
Yes, there is. Item eleven E, audio visual improvements proposal. Up on the screen, you'll see that.
Huh, it looks good.
It does.
Is the mic on? Yeah, the mic's working. Trustee Coleman.
Yes, okay, Ford. As you can see, our audio visual equipment does not work. We also have none in the conference room. In the August twenty-twenty-three meeting, the, we validated. In the August, the twenty twenty-three meeting, the, we allocated, to allocate seventy thousand dollars of ARPA funds to upgrade our audio visual equipment. The Capitol Improvement Committee went out to Alcom and got quotes that are attached so that we can do that. So we are seeking to get the approval of these quotes and to waive the procurement policy. We want to work with Alcom. We've worked with them before. They've been highly, highly recommended to us by our neighbors in the south, so.
I moved to waive the procurement policy, approve the quote from Alcom, the amount of six thousand, five twenty-seven seventy-five, install audio and visual equipment in the township conference room. I further moved to approve the quote from Alcom, the amount of seventy-five thousand, four thirty-nine sixty-one, to upgrade audio and visual equipment in the township meeting room, uh, meeting room. Of the eighty-one thousand, nine seventy-seven thirty-six total, seventy thousand to be expensed to account one oh one, two six seven, nine six two point zero zero two, ARPA expenses. Eleven thousand, nine seventy-seven point thirty-six is to be expensed to account number one oh one, nine six five, nine seven six point zero zero zero, additions and improvements. Second?
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel, and I have a question from the audience.
Account two six five. You said nine six five. Just want to clarify. One oh one, two six five.
It's two six five, not two six seven?
You said, uh, two six nine. It's one oh one, two six five, just for motion purposes. So we have the right GL number.
The second GL?
Yeah.
Additions and improvements. One oh one, two six five.
Oh, not two six seven?
Correct.
Oh, was that correct? Did I miss it?
The first one is correct and the second one is the one you stated incorrectly.
Okay, then I'll, I'll, please, please correct that.
Okay, a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions after that? Hearing seeing none. Roll call?
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Item eleven F, cemetery wall restoration quote approval. Clerk Wright?
Yes, board members in your packet, you'll see several photographs of walls in the Oxford Cemetery on the north side by Burdick Street that are very bad shape, in need of a lot of repair. As you may remember, we sent this, uh, this, uh, project out for bids on the mitten system and we received one bid back and that was an amount of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar range. So I did receive a call from this company, Strictly Stone and Sons, and they toured the cemetery and they said they would put a, put a quote into the township. And in front of you, you see that quote, an amount of eighty thousand, three hundred dollars. They also broke down each individual project by the cost of those projects. So there's thirteen projects that are proposed here in front of you. That average cost is about sixty-one hundred dollars per improvement on average. And you see the ability to get the work done. We did meet with them, Supervisor Curtis, Administrator Assistant Richter, myself, we met with them. We talked with them and it's our recommendation that we move forward with this quote. So with that, I'll move to approve the quote from Strictly Stone and Sons, an amount of eighty thousand, three hundred dollars for the repair and restoration of thirteen walls located in the Oxford Cemetery Eastern Division and Western Division, contingent on receivable insurance certificate naming the charter Township of Oxford as an additional insured. This eighty thousand, three hundred dollar amount to be expensed to general fund account one oh one dash two six seven dash nine six two point zero zero two, ARPA expenses.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Clerk Wright, a second by Trustee Charles. I'll open it for questions. Treasurer Ferrari?
Curtis, has the cemetery committee thought about possibly allocating these funds out of the cemetery fund? And freeing up that eighty thousand dollars in ARPA funds for possibly a Brad Dewey issue? Because that's going to come in quite a lot. I'd like to see that eighty thousand freed up for Brad Dewey and use the eighty thousand on the cemetery fund.
No.
If, and I'm going to speak for you. If we look at the, at the degradation of the cemetery right now, this eighty thousand is about not even a quarter of what's needed to bring that cemetery up to looking acceptable, let alone making it safe. You have a road that's paving, needs paving, it's washing out, the gravel's flowing out into Burdick Street. You have headstones that are busted and falling over. These walls that we represent are fixing are the worst of the worst. These would be half of the As if you could relate to the safety path. The other half of the As haven't been done yet. We still have thirty trees that have been deemed dangerous and dead. The, the amount in the cemetery fund that hasn't been spent for the last fifty years and the changing laws has indicated that we got to put a lot of money in the cemetery.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call?
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari, yes. Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Item eleven G, safety path maintenance bid award. Treasurer Ferrari?
Board members, in front of you is our safety path maintenance bid. We sent that out for bids. And in front of you is what's going to be needed to get that taken care of. Low bid was Birmingham Seal Co., which is also an Oxford company. Engineer Sharp, I believe, we got a pretty good price on that, I don't think considered. So with that, I'll make a motion to ask for township board trustees awards to twenty twenty-four safety path maintenance bid to Birmingham Seal Co. Inc., the base bid amount of one hundred twenty-eight thousand, three eighty-eight. If these funds are to be expensed, safety path fund account number two nine seven, eight five two, eight one one, point zero zero zero, restoration.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Clerk Wright. Questions? Seeing none. Roll call?
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yeah.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Jim, you'll take it from here, right, lower to high right?
Yeah, it's for their notice of award and give it under contract.
Okay, item twelve, new business, twelve A, for the twenty twenty-four chloride program for the Charter Township of Oxford. That's five applications of chloride for our dirt roads. It includes almost forty miles of dirt roads for a tune of about seventy-nine thousand dollars for all five total applications.
I move that the Charter Township of Oxford contract with the road commission of Oakland County provide chloride services for twenty twenty-four on all public gravel roads of the Charter Township of Oxford. Chloride costs will be paid a hundred percent by the Charter Township of Oxford for five applications, at the rate of eight cents per foot per application. The cost of the chloride service to be expensed to road fund account two oh four, four four zero, nine six nine, point zero zero zero, highway road maintenance contracts.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call?
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Board members, in your packet tonight, you'll see that the twenty twenty-four road commission gravel improve, gravel road improvement program. We are going to ask that the allocation of the hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars in tri-party funds available to Oxford Township Road Improvements of this money, we will be responsible for one-third of it, cost equalling thirty-eight thousand.
I move to enter into a cost participation agreement for the board of county road commissions of the county of Oakland, Michigan, the Charter Township of Oxford, for the twenty twenty-four gravel road program. Board project number five seven eight one two, amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, one ninety-eight, of which the Charter Township of Oxford will pay thirty-eight thousand, oh sixty-six, a tri-party program funding as it share the cost participation in the twenty twenty-four gravel road improvement program. Further, Supervisor Jack Curtis authorized us on the, sign the cost participation agreement on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call?
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-four is grappling with additional Oxford Township roads. Treasurer Ferrari, you want to tell them what we did?
Yep, we, Supervisor Curtis, I thank you for that, arranged a meeting with the RCOC, a person that's our contact. We kind of laid it out there saying, what needs to be done in Oxford Township, not just the bare minimum. What do we need to do to actually improve gravel roads in different areas of the township? Mr. Campbell came up with a list, which is attached for your review. And at least the gravel, the roads committee looked at that, thought it'd be a, a good idea to get this done this year to not only just band-aid it, which we did in the motion before, but actually do some improvements for various township roads.
I make a motion that the, that the Oxford Township board trustees formally approves the twenty twenty-four gravel road program as outlined by RCOC's Colin Campbell, in a total amount of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one forty-five. We are further committing one hundred and fourteen thousand, one ninety-eight, in the tri-party program, and forty thousand from the fund balance and telecommunications fund. Furthermore, we also authorize a transfer of two hundred and twelve thousand, nine forty-seven from the general fund account number one oh one, nine nine five, nine six five dot two zero four, to the roads fund, account number two oh four, zero zero zero, six nine nine, point one zero one.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Do you understand what we're doing? Any questions? Roll call?
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
You call Mr. Campbell, let him know?
I sure will.
Thank you.
Twelve D, review of the office design. Trustee Noel?
Uh, the Capitol Improvement Committee has been working very hard on reviewing the current building and situation. One of the things that we've talked about was the overall efficiency of the building with the work area within the main part of our building. As we discussed that, it came up that there might be a concern with the security. So we had Sergeant Meza do a review, send us a confidential letter to discuss the security as well as the layout of our, of our office space. So I'd like to move to waive the procurement policy and approve the, an amount not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars for the hiring of the Oakland County Municipal Supplier Augur, Kine, and Aller architects to, to review the current layout of the Oxford Township office and design a new layout that improves the overall efficiencies and securities. The seven thousand, five hundred dollars is to be expended to account number one zero one dash two six five dash nine seven six point zero zero zero, additions and improvements.
I will second that.
Trustee Noel made the motion. Treasurer Ferrari, second. Any questions? I hope you all had a chance to read the email from Sergeant Meza. If there are any questions, come on and we'll walk you around and show that to you. And we want to make it part of the public record, so. Roll call?
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Board members, item eleven E, high-tech time block purchase. With our new IT support, many of the things that we are moving forward with require attention from a technician to personally come out and work with the system. Treasurer Ferrari now has a new docking station, a secure docking station, and a secure PC. It took the gentleman about six hours to go through, download, upload, and move around all the files and data on Treasurer Ferrari's computer. So moving forward, Curtis Clerk Wright is scheduled for Thursday to get this done. And one way that they offered us a savings for these hours charged for each hour of a technician that's here in the building is you buy blocks. A time block from High Tech, fifty hours, it saves you approximately
Thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars. So what we're here tonight is, I would like to move to approve the purchase of a time block from High Tech in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars. This time block will cover fifty hours of onsite labor from High Tech Systems Service Incorporated. This is not included under our current contract. The seventy-five hundred dollars is to be expensed to account one zero one, two six seven, eight six one, zero zero zero, contracted services.
I will second that.
And a motion by Supervisor Curtis, a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Any questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please?
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Item twelve F, Oxford Village Summer Tax Collection Posting Agreement?
Uh, board members, the Village of Oxford would like us again to handle the, the backend of their twenty twenty-four tax collection season. I've let them know, you know, they've already approved. That's how I bring that in front of my township board, to be like to continue again. They pay us two fifty per parcel to take care of that. I move to authorize Treasurer Joseph G. Ferrari to execute the agreement for Oxford Village Tax BSNA postings as presented. Test the formal agreement to the minutes.
Second? I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions?
Yes, sir, Trustee Charles?
Treasurer Ferrari, where'd you get the two fifty from?
We did a study a couple of years ago. That's kind of what our time was per parcel to charge them to, to do that.
Couple of years ago?
Probably, yeah, probably about three or four years ago.
We've been talking a lot about inflation. Consider raising up the amount of inflation like the other things we're talking about, ambulances and
Yeah, we can look at that for next year. The village has already approved the two fifty. I can look at it for twenty twenty-five.
I think we should have done it already.
It's, it's kind of one of those things that six of one, half does of another. I want to, it's kind of self-serving on our end, too. Because by them doing their stuff early, I combine with my stuff, we settle early. We get our taxes made from the county early. So it does benefit them, but it benefits us as well. So I take that into consideration.
Don't worry about the timing, it's more the cost.
Yep.
It doesn't seem like if we keep talking inflation and we eat it and start passing it on.
I'll definitely look at it for next year.
Well, I think we brought it up last year, too.
Oh, probably did. I'll, I'll talk with the village.
Well, it's not the village, it's more what we think we should identify the costs and then tell them what we think is appropriate rather than ask them.
I want to be fair to both.
Any other questions?
Sure.
Okay.
Treasurer Ferrari, Trustee Noel. Okay, roll call?
Trustee Charles?
No.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Noel?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Item thirteen, items removed from the consent agenda for action or discussion. We had none. We had one before the meeting and we worked through that. Thank you very much. Item fourteen, public comment. Any members of the public like to make a comment? Seeing none. We'll move to board of trustees comment. Uh, Trustee Colvin?
I just want to thank everyone for their hard work.
Thank you. Trustee Noel?
Uh, no comment, thank you.
Treasurer Ferrari?
I want to kind of piggyback on what Trustee Colvin stated. Look at this agenda, there's a lot of work here that went into putting it together. This community and this township has seen a lot of improvements. For that, I'm very happy.
Okay, I have nothing. Clerk Wright?
Nothing.
And Trustee Charles?
The one thing I want to note is, I always appreciate how meetings are organized, how efficiently they typically run. On a couple of different boards that I think this board sets a good example. So thank you very much for everybody.
Thank you. Item sixteen?
Do you have anything?
No.
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Second?
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Colvin. Are there any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed can stay here.